Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, August 12th, Killdova Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. We will call this meeting to order and first item of business, if you would please join us and rise for the flag of allegiance.
Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great body for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you would please now join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. You'll notice Commissioner Jones is not here with us this evening. He had a prior engagement, so he'll be joining us at our next meeting. Next on the agenda is agenda approval.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second discussion.
Certainly.
Jerry, is there a committee report? I have one, you would just include it.
That would be great.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
No worries.
Okay, there's a motion in the second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say we're saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, we'll move on then to the first opportunity this evening for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to address the board on any topic of their choosing to do so. We do ask if you're speaking this evening that when you're called, if you would approach the podium and identify yourself by name and address. We also ask that if you're speaking on behalf or as an individual, if you would try to keep your comments to three minutes, and if you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you would try to keep those comments to five minutes. We did have a sign up sheet, so we'll start and call from the names on the sign up sheet. No worries if you didn't sign up, we'll then call from before. So first, we'd like to welcome Ms. Elizabeth Brothers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Brothers. I live at 1211B South Virginia Dare Trail. Good evening, Mayor Davies and the commissioners. I am here again to discuss some of the mega houses that are being built on our ocean front. We've seen the plans, so we have a new, fresh take on all of this. We've had them reviewed by several very reputable contractors, and there's some red flags that we would really like for all of you and the powers that look at these to revisit for us. We're concerned about setbacks. It looks like from the plans that the setbacks, there's a landing and a staircase that are going over the setback line. There were some squares around the pool that look like pump houses maybe that could be going past the setbacks, so if those could be reviewed, we'd really appreciate that. We're concerned mainly as the scope of the project, these 18,000 square feet, single family dwellings. The safety concerns are parking spaces, walkways, and fires and no sprinklers. If one of these houses were to catch on fire, if they're event houses, we know that, if one were to catch on fire and depending on the way the wind blows, without any fire sprinklers, our whole old seventy year old historic neighborhood could really go down in flames. And I know that codes, you're following codes, we know that, but they could be changed, and we'd really like that looked at. The sprinkler system's a big, big concern for us. The noise, it's a party structure, we know that. The exterior lighting, we live on our front porches. The lack of fencing and the barrier landscaping, if more of those could be put in, that'd be great. The increased septic on Route 12, that's, that's gonna be a problem, and we're really concerned about, we ran our cottage for two, three weeks, and we're concerned about loss of rental, as are our neighbors, because who wants to be in the middle of all of that? And we're, we're concerned about that. We would just love to see if possible, these codes could be revisited, that it could be made, these event houses a structure that is a commercial structure and then have those codes mainly for safety issues. We're concerned about the flooding, the six inches of the concrete driveway in our area floods all the time, so I don't know what could be done about that. The blueprints doesn't show concrete walkways where we think maybe there should be some, so that could be revisited. We would just really, really like for you to look at these codes and to fight for us. We live here too. We, we are here, we've been here for seventy years, and if y'all could fight for us and help with these codes, we would really, really appreciate it. And we know these houses and these people could sell their property, of course, of course they can, but what's going up there? Maybe a 7,000 square foot maximum? That's a cottage. Nineteen thousand square foot is not a cottage, it's a, it's a commercial property, and we would love your helping anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Vaughn, Ms. Vaughn?
Good evening. I'm Martha Vaughn. I live at 1217C South Virginia Dare Trail. Just since our last visits with you all about this same issue, we have taken some action in addressing our problems and our issues with the state. This was a recommendation that you all made to us, so we ran with it. I have copies of the cover letters to the agencies and particular people that we did reach out to in hopes that they will meet with us, and we are in conversation with them now, so I'll leave those with you tonight to peruse. But we did send to Ms. Elliott, your KAMA permit person, a letter addressing our main concerns, which Ms. Dolan just talked about, and we sent a letter to the person in charge of KAMA on state level with a copy of that original letter. And we sent a letter to the chief fire code consultant in Raleigh asking for a meeting about some of the fire code issues that we have a problem with. We also wrote to Mr. Mike Causey, who is the person in charge of building codes and fire codes there, and we sent a letter to, I think I mentioned this, Mr. Gutten, the office state fire marshal, the, I'm sorry, he is the building code supervisor, as you all know, I'm sure. And the KAMA permit letter went to Raleigh as well. And we also sent a letter to the Southern Environmental Law Center to see if they might be able to help us with some of the environmental issues that we see with these large properties. So we're waiting to hear back from all of these entities, and we wanted you to be aware that we have contacted them, so I'll leave these for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, welcome, Jack McCombs. It's good to see you, Jack.
Jack McCombs, 3118 Bay Drive, KDH. When the video that we watched when we started the meeting, when it first came out, I, I watched it online and was very pleased to see it because I cycle a lot, and I was pleased to, to see that there was some attention being paid to that. I'm not here to talk about cycling, though, I'm here to talk about pedestrian safety. We live on Bay Drive, and there's a multi-use path there, and my wife and I frequently walk on that, and I also cycle a lot on the road near other multi-use paths in Kitty Hawk and in Maxhead. We have a, a problem there. Many of the cyclists that use that are casual cyclists, they, they aren't experienced like most road bikers, and believe it or not, most road bikers are much safer cyclists because they're more experienced than casual cyclists. Quite a few times, my wife and I will be walking along the multi-use path, and a cyclist ridden by, a well-intentioned casual cyclist, will come up and pass this and give us no warning that you're, they're coming. We've almost been hit a couple times. These people are not doing this maliciously, they're doing it out of ignorance, how important it is to alert people that you're about to pass, that you're coming. And I would really urge the town to consider putting up some small signs at appropriate places on the town's multi-use path. That just gives some information to casual cyclists to alert people that they're about to pass. I'd also urge you to talk to other towns because there are quite a few multi-use paths being built in the other municipal areas. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Yes, welcome, Colleen.
Good evening, everyone. Colleen Ullman, 909th Avenue. I wanted to take a brief moment just to talk about national layout. I want to give huge kudos to Officer Laura Gilreath, who did an amazing job of scheduling and organizing and following up and following up and following up. I think it was really well attended. I know the folks that dropped by our booth for the Neighborhood Watch Group have just had positive feedback, and that was residents, second homeowners, visitors to the area. They were really excited to be there, so I wanted to thank the town for hosting that as always. Due to that particular event in our booth, we had nineteen additional residents show up at our booth and sign up to say that they wanted to be involved, which was great for us. We had a handful of people that said, "Oh, I got your flyer that you left at our house." And then meanwhile, our whole group was like, "Yeah, it worked." And we also have an additional thirty-five new members on our Facebook group, and there's a couple little questions you have to answer before you get admitted to the group, and that is, do you live in Killdova Hills either full-time or part-time? Do you own property here or do you work here? So those are actually thirty-five people who have a vested interest in what goes on in our community, so we're, we're super excited about that. I also wanted to announce and give everybody a reminder that our next Neighborhood Watch meeting is this Thursday, April, or I'm sorry, August 15th, from 6:30 to 7:30 in this room. Our guest speaker is Rebecca Woods. She's fabulous. She's the health, education, and community outreach supervisor for Dare County. She's gonna talk to us about things such as substance abuse, at-risk children, and the health needs and some disparities that exist within our communities, to see what we can do to help get information out to those who need it, so we're, we're excited to have her. At this next meeting, we're also gonna start scheduling our future walkabouts. We sort of took a hiatus because it's been so warm, but we're gonna start back up, and again, that's door knocking, introducing ourselves, sharing information about what our residents and visitors can do to keep their selves and their property safe. Just lock your doors, don't leave items of value in your car. So we're gonna take care of that at our meeting, and I was told today that our group t-shirts are in, so we're super, super excited about that. We'll be handing out some of those at our meeting this week as well. So thank you all for your support of this program. Not only are we excited to do it, but it seems like everybody in town is excited to have us stop by, so that's a real treat, so thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Yes, ma'am, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Betsy Brothers. We have a cottage at 1211B South Virginia Dare Trail, and of course, Killdova Hills. I'm here to ask you to help us a bit here. As you probably know, KAMA didn't approve the plans for Saga on the north side of our cottage, you must be probably aware of that. So we asked for a six-month moratorium to halt the building of these many hotels, allow time for our contracts to reply from the letters that Mrs. Vaughn has discussed, and we've written to different officials in Raleigh and here. So that's what I'm here to request, a six-months moratorium, so that these things can be looked into better, the plans, lots of different issues with setbacks and different things on those plans. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Yes, ma'am, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Betsy Brothers. We have a cottage at 1211B South Virginia Dare Trail, and of course, Killdova Hills. I'm here to ask you to help us a bit here. As you probably know, KAMA didn't approve the plans for Saga on the north side of our cottage, you must be probably aware of that. So we asked for a six-months moratorium to halt the building of these many hotels, allow time for our contracts to reply from the letters that Mrs. Vaughn has discussed, and we've written to different officials in Raleigh and here. So that's what I'm here to request, a six-months moratorium, so that these things can be looked into better, the plans, lots of different issues with setbacks and different things on those plans. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Okay, if you decide you would like to speak, we will have another opportunity before the close of our meeting. So we will move on then to response to public comment, and I'll start, well, let me do this, I'm gonna go in a mixed up, a little bit of a different order, because we'll take and address the three speakers about the larger homes, we'll take that aside. But Jack, thank you for coming and bringing your concern to us, we'll look into that. I saw Debbie taking some notes, so we'll look into what can be done on an education front there. And Colleen, as always, thank you for what you're doing, and I'm glad you mentioned Neighborhood Watch, because when you first started, you were saying, "Our group, our group," I want to make sure people know that group is Neighborhood Watch, that's what you're referencing, so that's great. And we'll move into discussion on the larger homes. I will say, yeah.
I have a comment I want to make.
Yes, please.
Yeah, my wife and I ride bikes, and they drive quite a bit, and we walk also, and I have a bell on my bike, and I always use it, and you'd be surprised the number of people that have earphones in.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I wouldn't want to overexaggerate, but I'd say it's half the people that have, that are listening to something other than what's going on around them. We try our best to warn them, but it's a very good point.
Thank you.
And that was referenced in the video too, about taking the earbuds out. And I thought you were going to say, moving into the larger home discussion, Commissioner Hogan has been doing some works on this topic, and actually, under the commissioner's agenda tonight, has some items that he wants us to look at with respect to, they're in the realm of what we would potentially have the authority to do. I commend you all on the work that you've been doing and reaching out to the state stakeholders when it comes to the building codes, a couple of things that, that you had mentioned with the sprinklers for one of those. I mean, that's something that's been a concern of mine since these were going up, that I brought up numerous times, that's my, I get the nuisance factor, I do, but my biggest platform that I have had a concern for years on is that safety factor, because there are so many folks in these homes, and I feel like it's gonna take one horrific tragedy before building codes are changed. So I do appreciate the advocacy work that you're doing as citizens to reach out to those that really do have the direct impact on the state building code. You know, we have to enforce what state building code says, and certainly, we can express our concerns as well, but when citizens rally and push elected officials at the state level to do something and put pressure on those who work at state building codes, hopefully we can move the, the needle a little bit. So we were, we are going to address this a little bit further tonight when we get to make a commissioner's agenda, but I would have, I need to turn to the town attorney on your specific request, Ms. Brothers, because I don't know from the legal framework, I don't think we can do, once something's in progress, I don't think we have the ability to put a moratorium in place.
That, that's correct, and more specifically, the Supreme Court's now told us that municipalities are not allowed to place a moratorium on a specific item within the code, only to investigate and perhaps change the code item. Impartiality kind of goes out the door if you're trying to put a stall on a, you know, specific request that could come from any applicant during the time period, but you're placing a moratorium to specifically investigate just to change the code on that item. Again, that makes the town and the council appear partial to a particular citizen's request, and from the standpoint of neutrality, we're not, we're not allowed to, not allowed to do that.
I'll open the floor for other comments as well, if anyone wants to chime in.
I'll make them when Mike brings his own, yeah.
So anyway, if you're able to stay for the whole meeting, which I don't think is gonna be a long meeting, but we'll get to that in just a little bit, but if you have to leave earlier, obviously, these are recorded and shared on our town's webpage. So thank you all, though, for coming and speaking. Anything else before we move on? And we will move on to the first item under new business, and this is the recommendation for bid acceptance for the 2019-2020 Street Drainage Right-of-Way Improvement Project. And welcome, Pete, our engineer is here to share information with us on this, what's in the packet. Thank you.
Mayor, before the meeting, one of our commissioners, who will remain nameless, whose initials are Terry Gray, challenged me to tweet my recommendations in the interest of gravity, so here we go. Two great contractors, both submitted good bids. Remarkably, they both have, generally, the whole contracting community has plenty of work, but in this case, one of the bidders appeared to have an opening in their schedule and reflected that with an extremely competitive bid. That's Barn Hill Contracting's at a little under 824,000, well below my engineer's estimate of about 905, and we recommend that you accept this excellent bid and make the necessary appropriations, and if you're so kind, to approve my proposal to oversee the work. Thank you, and I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you, Pete.
Thanks, Pete.
Questions? Comments?
Couple of questions. On attachment page NB/1A, we talk about Ocean Park Circle. Work will include new drains, swales, where we asphalt two and a quarter stick, paved parking, and some driveway work. What exactly the driveway work, is that the connections to the roads around the park or, or parking spots would be included? I just want a little more elaboration on what that'd be look like, if anybody knows it as well.
Again, anytime we do one of these road projects where basically the street is not failing or falling apart, instead of rebuilding it from scratch, we just put an asphalt overlay, two and a quarter inches in this case, and feather it down onto the driveways, but we also look at the drainage pattern in the area. If we're lucky, the water can flow across one driveway and in a swell into the next driveway, and another, and another, and we get about three driveways before we have to build a drainage structure, because those are kind of expensive. But maybe along the way, there's one driveway in the middle that's a little high that needs to be lowered down to provide a positive grade, so we'll cut out a section, maybe twelve feet long of the driveway, or maybe all of it from the street back twelve feet or so, and, and put a slight dip in it so the water can flow across it on its way to one of our new drainage structures.
Comments? So what's before us tonight is to make a decision to accept the bid, and a motion would be in order including the steps in, as presented in the packet. If anyone's ready to take action?
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation for bid acceptance of the 2019-2020 Street Drainage and Right-of-Way Approval Plan, as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, great. Thank you.
Very much.
Okay. Next, under new business is the appointments. We have two terms on the Historic Landmark Commission that will expire in September, and that Sandy Marklin and Mary Simpson both have expressed desire to be considered for reappointment to another three-year term. We also have applications on file.
Can we make this one last?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Sandy Marklin and Mary Simpson to their terms on the Historic Landmarks Commission.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor, please say we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, great. Okay, and we certainly thank them both for their continued service to the town. With that, we are already on to commissioner's agenda. Mr. Gray, you pressed this evening, I know you have something because you have a committee report.
I do, I do, and I'll start with that. We, we have a meeting on our West Side Recreation Group on July 30th, and it was a get-to-know-each-other meeting where we did a lot of talking, and we covered some specific items, ground rules for procedure, participants and participation. An agenda was created which included member and staff introductions. There were four top parks that were selected for consideration, and that was Hayman Park, Aviation, Meekins, and the Bomb Track. Our next meeting will be September 23rd. There was a lot of good discussion and a lot of general information that the members expressed. We had a pretty good attendance in the audience as well, so I was really excited about it, and I'll look for some great things to come out of this. And like I said, our next meeting will be September 23rd at 6:00 PM. If anybody would love, like to attend, we'd love to have you there. And I'll go right straight on into commissioners, I'll try to make this quick, I have a few items to bring up. The first item I wanted to bring up was affordable housing. At the August 5th Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting, affordable housing became an issue again that rang the alarm bell on the housing crisis in Dare County. The lack of sufficient workforce housing is a problem that pluses, and I think that we all need to be diligent in trying to address that. It's, it's, it really is crisis. It was pointed out that progress had been slow to develop. I think there'd only been two site plans that had been, come forward. I found it interesting that both of those were cluster homes, and we've had proposals geared for cluster homes, and that's one of the things I want to talk about when, when Mr. Hogan brings up his item. But it concerned me that Killdova Hills and Maxhead were pointed to as a lack of action, and that came out of the meeting that we didn't move to address the issue. With that being said, what I would like to do would be bring it up to have this board consider that we invite the chamber president to come in and make a presentation, her presentation again, and let the board listen to what she has to say. It just, it kind of bothered me that it was said we didn't take action, and, and we didn't try to move the fall, so I had some concern about that.
Jerry, do you mind if I comment on that for a minute? I was actually at that meeting too, I was wearing my other hat when I was sitting there, and I was so tempted to stand up, but it wasn't during a comment time, because I thought that was honestly, since you're bringing it up, I thought it was an unfair attack on Killdova Hills. If anyone's followed the history, Killdova Hills was the leader in doing this. We were the first town years ago to take action and pass workforce, in fact, we may still be the only one that has specific workforce housing language in our ordinance, and so we have partnered in the past with developers and did a project that started out with, you know, the whole goal of affordable housing, and as times have changed and people have changed who were living in those, they were transitioned over, according to the parameters that they could be, into fair market value. Most of those units are no longer sitting under workforce housing, and I think it's a product of, you know, sometimes you give a helping hand, but then when you're ready to take the next step, you want to get your maximum return on the investment. And so I have stated that I think that project should be studied in depth to see where the gaps are and how something that was originally put forth as kind of a model project, how it, you know, changed and has drifted. And then I also think, to your point of that these, the county did jump in and make some changes, but to, to speak to only two applications have been submitted, it's really not, this isn't a negative on the county, this is in general speaking to how complex this issue is, just adopting those ordinances. Just adopting those ordinances really hasn't changed anything for making affordable housing. I don't know how many just generally philanthropic builders are out there. They've got a return on investment that they have to make, but I think the going to meetings and pointing fingers is not what's going to drive solutions. I think it's getting key stakeholders around the table, which that initiative started, but then that has waned as well. So, I'm supportive of inviting the chamber here, and I hope that they can come with solution-based ideas, which I think is bringing key stakeholders back around the table. Any other thoughts?
There were two items that were pointed out, and one of them was the modification of some zoning ordinances. And then the second item, which hasn't been addressed, was that there has to be some sort of effort with the state for septic requirements. And until you get that, you're not going to have any. So, that may be part of the problem why there were only two applications, I would assume. But at least if we invite people to come back and talk about it, and, you know, we're going overboard doing our due diligence, I feel. So, then the next item I wanted to bring up was Lake Drive Signal Light. You know, I had requested permission from the board to discuss with our representative with NC DOT a couple of issues, and one of them was the Lake Drive Stoplight. And the mayor's received a letter from Jerry Jennings, and it's, there's good news that the traffic numbers did support putting a light there. The bad news is that they don't have any money. So, from talking with Alan Moran, they're trying to research ways to fund that. That's pretty much where that's at right now. But this, in looking at this issue, it brings up another problem that I saw that Jack spoke about tonight, and that was viper safety. We recently had a motorcycle, I mean, a bicycle, get hit at that intersection by a car. I've noticed that going down the bike, the sidewalks in Killawatt Hills, I think it would be a benefit if we had a bike stop sign when it comes to intersections. I think that, I looked at Naxhead on their multi-use path, and they have them, and they also have a sign, Jack, like you were asking about, with instructions about being courteous to people on that sidewalk, an information sign that's mounted underneath of it. I've had a organization approach me and tell me that they're willing to fund partially installations of those signs, which would be a great benefit, I think, to the town. Naxhead seems to have them at the signalized intersections, which I guess is where the most amount of traffic is. Our, in talking with staff, our sidewalks are a bit different than Naxhead's multi-use path. Our sidewalks are truly sidewalks, and when you come to the outlets on them, they turn to the bypass. And the bicyclists that are using them, some of them aren't familiar, like Jack said, they're not educated, and they'll come down the sidewalk and they'll turn right out into the bypass. And if you had a bike stop sign there, at least I think they would maybe stop and then, you know, not go right out into bypass. I think it would help. So, I wanted to bring that item up, and maybe we can have the town manager investigate that and see if it's something we feel like we could do, check the legal aspects of it. I don't think it would be a problem there. But I think it would be beneficial if we did that. That's a, we've got a couple of dangerous intersections. That's a real dangerous intersection, because we have a lot of heavy traffic as far as trucks and tractor trailers and stuff like that that come out of there. And so, that was a concern. The other item that the board let me talk with them about was the stormwater issues. And I inquired of the representative that they had come up with some sort of solution. He indicated that no, they were working on it, and I asked him to make sure that he made his response to Mr. Albright or to Debbie. So, and I haven't heard any more about that. And then I had another issue that came forward to me, and that was the issue of street parking that was brought up by Mom's Sweet Shop. And I've seen a few of those situations in town that have cropped up where people are, they've outgrown, you know, their parking. And I know that Steve had done an excellent job of placing some additional parking off of the street over behind the gas station in Southern Bank, right there by Collington Road. And what I would like to do would be to forward this item, the request from Mom's Sweet Shop, to the SISC, and they could maybe address it, review it, and come back with some sort of recommendation, you know, on whether we have other streets that are available to do the same type of parking arrangement with. I think it's something we could look at, and there may be some. So, I'd like to request that we forward that to the SISC and let them look at that.
For those of you who are wondering, what's SISC, Street Improvement Special Project Committee?
Sorry about that.
We actually have, we actually have a meeting on the 20th.
Yeah, okay, but, and if we could, you know, have that item go for consideration and let them review that, I think it might be a good thing to look at.
Yeah, that's good.
So, and that's all I have, except for comments.
Very good. Good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Couple of brief things. I want to echo Cameron's comments on thanking Officer Gilchrist and all our staff for our amazing job at National Night Out. It was a whole lot of fun. I was great, all the vendors and the groups that were there. I think they did an exceptional job. The way that everything was mapped out, really, the spacing was good, people were able to kind of circulate really well, and it was a, it was a fun night. I thank you, everybody involved. Last Wednesday, August 7th, I attended the North Carolina District's Commission's public hearing on Dominion's Energy's request to increase energy rates by 9.1%. They had a hearing in Mania that evening. When I, I talked, speaking for myself, I voiced pretty serious concerns over what they are asking for. It's roughly a $200 increase per year per household in Dare County, so it's a significant amount of money. And we've already kind of talked tonight about, it's really housing and the strains of cost of living here, an extra 200 bucks a year, and for your life, it would just make that, things that much tougher. So, I was happy to, you know, be able to be there and share my concerns about that. And it was, turnout was low, but it was very diverse. You had people from Columbia, people from Curritah County, people from all over the region were there, so. Weather was awful, so they made a sacrifice to make it, but that's all I have.
John, I actually had that on my list, and since you brought it up, I know we have both, you were there in person, and I did it electronically, submitted comments as individuals, but figured I could take this opportunity. If we are in an environment to provide public comment and could comment on behalf of the board, the board needs to provide consensus that we're all on the same page, and that's our position, is expressing opposition to that proposed increase. So, I figured I'd like to take a moment and see if there is consensus, and that way, if you are opposing or putting forth any public comment here forward, you could do so on behalf of the board. So, is there consensus to have opposition to that?
Absolutely.
Great. Okay, so we'll document that, and then moving forward. Great. Okay. Thank you.
Would you like something submitted by the board?
Yes, because electronic, we can still, it's great, and folks, if you're not aware, I think it's on our Facebook page. I know I have personally shared it, how you can make your own public comments a very simple form. If you click on the link that's shared, it really takes you less than five minutes. You do have to have the docket number, but again, that's in the Facebook post, and I know on my site, so the more comments, the better. But yes, that would be great if we also submit something on behalf of the town. So, yeah, great. Thank you.
I have a couple of things. The second one is July meeting of the Tourism Board, but we'll do that second. It's only about four minutes long, so. The other thing is, I've been talking with staff, and they've been a great help in helping try to figure out some ways that we can lessen the impact on the big houses on the ocean front. And as a result of several meetings I've had with Cameron and Meredith and their discussions with staff, we've come up with several proposals. Number one would be to require landscape buffers, similar to the buffers that we now require between commercial structures and residences in other places like where Loews is, it's backing up on the red, they have to have a landscape buffer there. And also, number two would be to increase the parking setbacks to seven feet for the large parking area. It's like five right now, is that correct? Increase that to seven feet, the setback. And then, number three is also to lessen the impact somewhat on the neighboring properties, and also in the interest of safety, is require an access lane and limit stacked parking to four vehicles, an access lane for emergency, emergency access. So, if the board would like to discuss this, we could go forward with these ideas and present them to the planning board for formal review and see what their recommendation is, and then we'll come back to us, and we can decide what we want to do. And of course, if there's any other ideas, anybody has staff or anybody here on the board, we'd be happy to entertain them.
Discussion?
I don't have a problem with going forward with that and letting them come back to the recommendations. One thing that I did want to say, though, is I really felt that the cluster home was a proposal that came for us that, or came before us that could have maybe eliminated some of the possibility. So, you know, I wouldn't mind talking about that at the end of the discussion, but I just think it was something that could maybe have eliminated this, you know, the larger homes. I think people may have opted for that. I saw it as something that, you know, it was like the old cottage courts that used to be here, and, you know, so maybe we could have some discussions when that proposal comes back about whether or not there's any value in looking at those cluster homes again as a way to offset this. I know it was expressed that, you know, a couple of developers had said that they, instead of doing this, the larger homes, that they would do the cluster homes, you know. So, I just wanted to bring that up.
And we can do cluster homes. We did, we adopted an ordinance to allow that. There was one, the ordinance that we adopted, then I believe an applicant came back and wanted to change that.
Yeah, wanted to change the setback, yeah.
Well, we did cottage courts.
He wanted to be able to have.
No, we did cottage courts that were under single ownership, and we did cluster homes which allowed kind of townhouse ownership. You only owned to the ground under the house, and the rest is kind of an HOA area. So, there's two different ordinances that were adopted that do allow the cottage courts with lesser setback, and a lot of different concessions were made with the ordinance to encourage that over the large houses. We just haven't gotten any proposals for cottage courts.
And that's what I wanted to look at, what the specific request was, and maybe have some discussion about that, because it seems we haven't had any applications on what we get, so. That was the only comment I wanted to make. But I'm in favor of this board forward to come back for recommendations.
Yeah, I think if I had to choose one of the two, as a neighbor, I would definitely pick the cluster homes.
Yeah.
And, but as we said, we haven't had any interest in that. They've been, I think they've done at least one in Naxhead, maybe more.
They have. It looks pretty good. Looks better than the big home.
Oh, I think it looks way better. Maybe when that finally gets up and running, and the developers and the business people see how that works, and they might say, well, why don't, you know, why don't I do this? Because it may even be more lucrative in the long run to have four or six, or, I don't know if you could have eight on any of ours, but have numerous cottages, and it might work out better.
Yeah.
Getting back to the safety piece, is do we have any authority over requirements? So, a sprinkler system in a home, that's different state. I was curious if we could work that in here. I guess not. I'm, I think I'm happy that we could move forward on this and let the planning board do their work on it. Here we go.
Mary, is there a Cameron, everything there?
I'll just say, the reason we haven't gotten cluster homes over the big houses is because these houses are being built on 50-foot wide lots, which can't accommodate cluster homes. They're not wide enough to accommodate multiple dwelling units. That's, that's the difference. That's why we haven't gotten the applications, because the applications we're getting for the larger homes are on 50-foot wide lots.
The others are 75, right? They need 75 to do it?
Hundred.
A hundred.
But practically, they need 100 to do it, the shared drive aisles in the houses. You need, there's some separation requirements for fire code that you need more than 50 feet to accommodate a cottage court or a cluster home by, by both fire code and our zoning code, so. Just, just wanted to give you maybe a why we haven't gotten as many applications, is because it's not enough width of the land. There's enough land, it's just not wide enough.
Yeah, I think most of us know that the bigger homes, we can't, we can't say the number of bedrooms. And that really puts us at a disadvantage. And it's the same with the sprinklers. We're not allowed to make any restrictions that are more strict than the state's standards. And that gets us in a lot of different ways, and this is one of the places, this has hurt us for a long time. And there's been some talk with the state over the last, show, couple of years, try to come up with a separate category for these type of buildings, say, they would be required to have exit signs and sprinklers and such. That doesn't seem to be going anywhere, though. But in the meantime, we'll get this to the planning board and see if they can maybe help us out with some more stuff, and come back to us.
Mike, I appreciate your efforts on this. I feel like it's the most concrete direction we've had, and we've been kicking this around for years, so I'm glad that there's support from the board and to see where we can go with this, so, thank you.
Well, a lot of credit goes to the staff, let's say.
Great.
Your staff. Thank you, Cameron.
Did you say you wanted to show the video tonight? Do you have that?
Yeah, I have the video.
Okay.
You got that video ready, Mike? Ready?
Hi, everybody. Dean Edels here with your Dare County Tourism Board meeting recap from the June 20th, 2019 meeting, which took place at the Welcome Center in Rowan O'Callaghan. As we've reported previously, the tourism board recently closed on the property immediately to the north of the Soundside Events Site in Naxhead, which includes the Dairy Queen, a mini golf, and a roads course. The tourism board has no interest in operating a mini golf course, and it poses a potential hazard, so we reviewed proposals for the demolition of the mini golf. And after review and at the steering committee's recommendation, the tourism board voted unanimously to move forward with hatch shell concrete for that demolition. Next, the tourism board reviewed some proposed rules, qualifications, and an application for a newly created grant called the Tourism Impact Grant, the TIG, if you will. The TIG takes and folds together two previous restricted fund grants, short-term restricted and the natural, cultural, historic, folds them into one grant. One particular characteristic about the TIG is that it offers a tiered match system. The tiered match will allow the tourism board to spread its dollars and fund more projects within the community. The way that it works is, for projects of less than 50,000, the applicant is required to have no match. But for projects of 50,000 to 125,000, the applicant will need to provide at least a match of 25%. For projects in excess of 125,000, the applicant will need to provide a match of at least 50%. As with any restricted fund expenditures, these projects are paid for on a reimbursement basis, and Dare County nonprofits and Dare County governmental entities are eligible, and it's for projects that are within Dare County, of course. The rules and qualifications were, and the application were voted on by the tourism board unanimously approved. These will be up on our website shortly. If you have any questions about the grant, in the meantime, please feel free to contact us at the Visitors Bureau. Ask for the Grants Administrator. Our number is 473-2138. Next, we heard a report from the Budget and Finance Committee with the occupancy and meals collections information from the month of August. meals collections information from the month of April. April was a gangbuster month for us with late occurrence of Easter. That definitely pumped things up. We saw growth on the occupancy side of 23%, and for the calendar year to date, we're up 10%. On the meals side, we saw growth of 14% for the month of April, and calendar year to date, we're also up 14%. Also, within the Budget and Finance Committee report, we took a look at the fiscal year 1920 budget. This is a process that's gone on for a couple of months and included a public hearing. At the June meeting, the Tourism Board formally adopted the fiscal year 1920 budget. If you're interested in taking a look at that budget, it will appear on the outerbanks.org website. This concluded the meeting for the June 20th activities of the Dare County Tourism Board. We'd like to invite you to a special meeting of the board on July 18th. At that time, we'll hear a report from Johnson Consulting, the company that we hired to do an economic impact site feasibility study for the Soundside Events Site. So, please make the effort to be there at nine o'clock, July 18th, at the Roanoke Island Welcome Center. Hope everybody's summer is off to a great start. Let us know how your business is doing, let us know what you're seeing out there, and we hope to see you around town. Thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments?
They've completed the demolition, I must say, by today of the Cut Putt Course.
Yeah. That was, that's a bother, there's a little fill there.
Yeah, right. It's still a big fill.
Fill's hard to come by, it's expensive around here, so it doesn't come help society somewhat. In case you're wondering, the, of course, the mini-golf's no longer there, and the ropes course was signed to a very long-term lease, which carries over, and we're not, we're not able to do anything about that except keep it there. But the good part of that is, the area of land that it takes up, it's very low impact on anything that the Tourism Board would like to do, because it's mostly over wetlands. So, it wouldn't be anything, any of that land isn't anything we could put anything on anyway, so it worked out pretty good. So, now we got very long-term lease there. I think it's like 2045 or something, it's ridiculous, but anyway. So, we'll get a little bit of income from that, but it's, it's going to stay there, it'll be there for as long as they want it to, I suppose.
Great, thank you. Moving on under Mayor's agenda, first, wanted to say officially, because we haven't met since you became a great-grandpa, so congratulations. Exciting. She's adorable. And then, please pay attention to the town's Facebook and website, we will be announcing very soon the date of the ice cream social. That is a huge community event, typically like late September-ish, could be in early October, we're still finalizing that date, but it's here at Aviation Park. We have ice cream that our police department typically serves, Dana's one of the master milkshake makers. And then, the fire auxiliary is typically out there, serving free hamburgers and hot dogs and chips and drinks. So, this year, we have, you know, with the addition of the doggie park, I think it's going to draw even more people, but historically, we've had anywhere from 300-plus people that come out to that amazing event. So, mark your calendars once we give you the date, but it'll be out on social media first, probably before we meet again, when that date is. So, that's all I got this evening.
Thank you for the congratulations. I spent the afternoon with our granddaughter, Bree, in LCN, two weeks old today.
All right. With that, we'll move on to town manager's agenda, not this evening. Okay, town attorney's agenda?
That's for me, Mayor.
All right, and to the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Consent agenda, first item, the minutes from the July 11th, 2019 meeting, the monthly reports from June of 2019. Two budget amendments, both of them recognizing contributions, one for the police department's crime prevention, and the other one for the fire department prevention promotional items. Number four is an amendment to the Chapter 94 Animals to update the Paul's Park regulations. Unintentionally, we had made the park where it was not permitting younger children from enjoying the park with their families, which was not our intent, and when it was brought to our attention, this, this will take care of that. B is Chapter 10 General Provisions, it's authorization to issue civil citations, revising the authorized staff. Number five is to schedule two public hearings. These would be scheduled for the September 11th meeting, which is a Wednesday. The first one is Chapter 153 Zoning Sewage Disposal, update sewage disposal regulatory agency. And number, item B, is zoning stormwater management to clarify commercial and wanted to family dwelling requirements and create maintenance requirements. Approval of the consent agenda will schedule these public hearings. And lastly, resolution for town language for Wright Brothers National Memorial General Management Plan. Park Service has contacted the town and provided recommended language for the town to be included in its general management plan for the Wright Brothers National Monument. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented, and a motion would be in order.
Should I move? Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
You can raise. Great, thank you. Okay, this brings us now to the second time set aside for public comments. So, we'll call from the floor if anyone would like to speak at this public comment time. Yes.
Good evening. Dylan Hikens, 1003 Clamshell Drive. I just wanted to take the time to thank Commissioner Hogan, the board, and staff for their ideas to help soften the appearance of the mini-hotels while preserving personal property rights. Regulation on parking, landscaping, and stormwater management will bring these properties closer to the commercial standard that they occupy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Yes, ma'am.
Pepsi Brothers again. I'd just like to comment about the cluster housing, and I'd like to thank you all so very much. I can tell that folks have been working on all of this, so I'd like to thank you for the attention to this problem with these huge houses. I thought the north property beside us, there are two lots, they're 50 feet each, so they're, that's 100 feet, obviously. Saga has bought the properties from what we understand. Well, I know they have, because we have the plans for them. And we had heard, the pals who own that property are friends of ours forever, and so we understood that they had a proposal for some cluster homes being built. I don't know what happened there, but they were in hopes that that's what would happen on that property, instead of what, instead of, you know, something like what is happening with two of these Saga, 24-bedroom each houses, because Cammer hasn't approved it, so perhaps they'll have to be some smaller. But I thought that is what had happened, that's what we understood from them. But, and then up, just one quick comment. With zoning, as far as, as what happens about square footage, I find it interesting that these, you know, Nag's Head has 5,000 square feet, Southern Shore's limit, Southern Shore's 6,000 square feet. I find it really interesting that Kill Devil Hills has no limit. So, you know, I think so many people would greatly appreciate that being addressed, and, I mean, that's a huge concern, that allows what's happening with Saga. So, a lot of us would be so grateful if that's something that could be seriously talked about. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. President.
Appreciate all your work.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at this public comment time? Okay. Then, response to a public comment, thank you, Dylan, for your comments. And obviously, we're going to have opportunity to have much more discussion on, on these larger homes, too. I know historically, the town has not taken the perspective of putting a limit to square footage in large part, again, this is just historical reference, because of the size of the lots that we have in Kill Devil Hills. On, on the oceanfront, we have predominantly more of the longer, deeper lots than some of our neighboring towns, so that's really factored into our concern of trying to standardize with one square footage restriction, allocation. But certainly, I think everything's on the table, we come forward and have some discussions, so, see if there's any change in that. So, any other comments on, on the board? Anything else this evening for the good of the group? Okay, and a motion would be in order to adjourn.
I'd like to motion that we adjourn our meeting.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye. You can raise. Great, thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you for attending this evening.